I'd like to open the Instructional Subcommittee for Public Schools today, Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Dev, can we have roll call?
Mr. Agnew?
Here.
Ms. Lowery?
Here.
Ms. Cora?
Here.
Salute to the flag, please.
I declare the attendance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant, now subject wonderful free, open meeting law, pursuant to open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Dev, do we have citizens input?
We do not.
Thank you. To discussion, I'm going to go in order, 3.1, presentation and discussion to refer 2023 accountability data. Dr. Curly?
So, thank you for having me and the rest of our team here today to talk to you about our 2023 accountability data. I think this meeting is as much for us as it is for you because we're bringing this to the whole committee and we're looking for some feedback in terms of what of this should move on and whether or not there are some areas where you would want some additional information shared with the whole committee. So, these, in this, this first slide here is really just for reference in terms of how testing has gone since 2019. That was the last time we really had, 2019, we had full test administration and it was actually the last time that we were offered full accountability data. We'll talk a little bit more about that. 2021, we're talking about referencing some previous data. We go 2022 and then back to 2019. That's because in 2021, even though we did administer NCAT, there was only a half test administered in grades three through eight. And so, it's really that 2019, 2022, and 2023 data that becomes most important as we're looking for like some kind of trend data over the years. So, this, this slide here, the refresher slide, this was actually offered to us by, within one of our state meetings and really just offers an overview. And I know there are a lot of slides in here that speak very specifically, but this one, I think, really highlights the things that we'll talk about today. The fact that the accountability system in itself has two components, a normative component and criterion referenced. So, when we talk about schools being ranked in terms of their percentile, that's really a reference to that normative component. And then, we have a criterion reference component. Those are the targets for schools and districts. So, for every student group, every school, every district, we're given targets, annual targets that we work at from year to year. So, today we'll talk about what it looks like in terms of the percentile rankings of schools and then what those criterion referenced targets look like at the school and district level and in some cases for some student groups. As a reminder, the accountability system references a whole bunch of indicators. The biggest is achievement. In grades three through eight, achievement is based on academic achievement for math, ELA, and science. It changes a little bit at the high school because there are some high school only components in reference to high school completion, advanced coursework, extended engagement rate, and things like that. That's included in high school achievement when we look at those, when we look at those indicators. And then, the last piece that's on this slide just talks about as we're looking at each of those targets in each of those areas, we are assigned, we're assigned points. If a school is not within the like lowest 10%, the only thing that we ever pay attention to is the extent to which they're meeting targets. If they are in the lowest 10 percentile, then that becomes, that becomes the focus in terms of they requiring assistance or intervention from the state level. So, we'll get a little bit more into that. This again is just a reference to kind of the history of the accountability measures which ties right into that whole idea that 2019 was really the last time the full accountability was in place in terms of the fact that we got numbers, we got, we heard what percentile schools were in, and we also got information about those target percentiles. These are all the targets, these are all the areas in which we receive those targets. And so, I'm going to just actually kind of leave it at that because this is really, I included this for reference and we'll talk a little bit more about it as we go. The next couple of slides offer the ratings so you can see like how much each of these pieces matters in the accountability system and you can see that student achievement at 60% is the greatest weight and then there are other measures as well. So, we have those for non-high schools and then here for high schools. And so, I mentioned this earlier, achievement up at the high school level, the math, ELA, and science only accounts for 40% because the other piece of their achievement is tied into only those high school measures. The big, maybe big ticket information that we haven't already talked about so far is just down at the bottom, that when we look at the data, it's a weighted average of 2022 and 2023. So, there's that 40-60 split. So, whenever we're looking at school percentiles, it takes two years of data into account and that, that makes a difference for schools because in order to really make some serious gains, you really have to make traction for a couple of years in a row to really see a bump. The big ticket information from here is really that second bullet in the targets for achievement indicators. Back in the spring is when schools actually got their targets for that year. Schools are always looking for targets now. How are we going to know what our targets are for next year? How do we know what we need to do over the course of this year? Generally speaking, schools don't find out their targets until mid-year and last year it was even later. They found out what their targets were in the spring. And at that time, for each student group, for each one of those indicators, schools were given a path and it basically was determined based on where they were in '22 in relation to where they had been in 2019. So, if in 2022, they had already gotten back to 2019 levels, they were put on a path forward. If in 2022, schools were not where they had been back in 2019, they were given a recovery path. So, their targets were targets that were set just trying to get them back to 2019. And what we saw across schools and even from student, you know, within student groups was that it was kind of a mixed bag. A school could be on the path forward in math, but on the path to recovery in ELA. They could be on a recovery path for their progress toward English language proficiency, but maybe they were on a recovery path for science or something like that. And this is where, when we get to what it looks like and how we did in relation to our targets, this is where we'll see the scale, the scales. So, anywhere we see a zero, we know that our performance declined. A one means we were pretty much flat. A two says we improved but below target. A three, we met the target, and a four exceeded the target. The other thing we'll see when we get to the district data is that, and for school-based data, is that for each, for each set of grades, three through eight and then high school, we are measured against targets for all students and then specifically for a lowest-performing group. And that measure actually is kind of this 50-50 split. So, the state really puts an emphasis on all students and doubles down on that by saying, we want you, you know, we want you to hit these targets for your all-students group, but when we look at those students who have been, who were the lowest performing last year, you have very specialized targets for them and it's, they're going to be their combined achievement 50-50 split that determines the way in which we acknowledge your need for assistance. I mentioned that the district accountability doesn't include a normative component, so we don't get ranked against other districts, but we do get measured against targets. For us, in this past year, we were identified as making moderate progress toward targets. So, we earned 47% of our target points. And that put us in a category as not requiring assistance or intervention from the state. So, this might be easier to, I can't, I don't have my glasses on, but this might be able to, be easier to see on paper than it is on the screen. But this is an example of what is going to be overall district picture looks like. And you can see here, it really is a mixed bag of those zero, one, two, three, and four. There are definitely areas like in grades three through eight, English language arts achievement, where we see a decline. In math, we're looking at, you know, kind of this flat. And then, science, we make progress, but we didn't hit the target. And that's, you know, for our all-students group. And then, right beside it is how we did for our lowest-performing students. So, it looks a little different for our lowest-performing students. Again, there's a decline, but then, but in math, we, you can see that we actually exceed the target that was set for our lowest-performing students in math. The rest of the pieces there are there for your reference. The one thing I would point out is that there's a, you know, significant difference, I would say, in the high school performance where for the all-students group, we exceeded the target for ELA and made progress toward target in both math and science. If you look at the high school completion, we did see a decline in performance in terms of the four-year graduation rate and the annual dropout rate, but we exceeded our target for the extended engagement rate. For English language proficiency, at the lower grades, we were flat, but at the high school, we actually did meet our target. Met, we exceeded all of our targets for chronic absenteeism. And then, at the high school, they exceeded their target for advanced coursework completion. So, there is, there really is a marked difference when you look at the high school in terms of the extent to which they reached their targets when you compare it to the target maybe for the lower grades. We have a major focus coming into this year on students with disabilities and our multilingual learners. And so, it was important for us to take a look at the extent to which we met targets for each of these groups. And I've included this information here. Again, you can see a mixed bag at the, in the lower grades, grades three through eight, there really is a, you know, we're really looking at performance that is either declining or making progress but not quite getting there. At the high school, we do see more of those threes and fours indicating that targets that were set for the high school were met or exceeded in many areas. For our English learners and our former English learners, the data doesn't look as strong at the lower grades, grades three through eight. We again see the zeros, ones, and twos saying that at best, we made some progress toward targets. But, and then, if you look over at the, at the high school, much of the achievement data looks the same, the achievement data, the growth data, but we do see an increase and we are meeting targets when it comes to the English language proficiency total for those Ls and former Ls. It's the exact same data as, as you see for the all-students, but you also see exceeding targets for chronic absenteeism and indeed coursework completion. So, the school's overall accountability classification is, do we, does anyone have any questions actually just in terms of the district data?
No.
Okay. So, the school's overall accountability classification I mentioned kind of comes in two ways where we're going to say that schools are requiring assistance or intervention or not based on, based on their performance. So, the first two bullets there, this designated as chronically underperforming or underperforming, that's actually something that doesn't have an automatic trigger. It's something that's determined by the commissioner. So, that's one category. Among the lowest performing 10% of schools in the state, which many, unfortunately, many of our schools fall there, those schools are identified as requiring assistance or intervention. And then, there are other pieces. If you have a high school graduation rate below 67, which we do not, you can end up in this category. You could also be put in this category if you have low-performing student groups. So, if your students with disabilities are in the lowest 5% in the state, even if your school is performing at the, in the 25th percentile overall, you could still be put in the category as requiring assistance or intervention if one of your subgroups is in the lowest 5%. And then, finally, not meeting assessment participation requirements, we do have a couple of schools in that category. So, this slide shows us kind of the breakdown. We have 16 out of our 17 schools did receive a classification. The one that didn't was the Early Learning Center because they don't have any tested grades. Among the 16 that did receive classifications, nine of them are classified as requiring assistance or intervention. Seven are classified as not. There's some comparison data here. We do take a look at the, the other urban schools and in comparison across the state, where we have only 44% identified as not requiring assistance or intervention, across the state, that looks more like 83%. Where we are 44% not requiring assistance or intervention across urban schools in the Urban Superintendents' Network, that number looks more like 55%. So, those are, those are some pieces there for reference. This slide is just a summary slide. It shows where all of our schools are. You notice that the ones on the left with the blue, green, and yellow arrows, those are all of our schools that were classified as not requiring assistance or intervention. And in, when you're in that category, the, the big, the big information there, the most important thing that stands out is progress toward targets. We had just one school, Sylvia, that met 75% of progress, progress targets, putting them in the category of meeting or exceeding targets. A large number of our schools made substantial progress toward targets and we had two schools who were not in the lowest 10%, but made, making only moderate progress toward targets. The rest of our schools are shown with red arrows. Those are the schools that have been identified as requiring assistance or intervention. And you'll notice that two of those schools are the schools that were previously our Level Four schools, Watson and Fonska. Those are the ones designated by the commissioner as requiring broader comprehensive support. The next couple of slides actually show information that the committee was share, had been shared with the committee when we did some early releases. It's just another kind of summary document for all of the schools, their percentile, and then the rationale for their classification. So, these are all schools requiring assistance or intervention. And you can see in that middle column, for the, you know, for the most part, they're among the lowest performing 10% of schools. There's additional information there because for, for the most part, all of those schools also have low student subgroup performance, which means they have subgroups that are performing in the lowest 5% in the state. The last two there, RPA and Stone, have low participation rates. And then, in addition, actually, I think they are just both low participation rates. The next slide is all of our schools that are not requiring assistance or intervention. And you can see that all of them have accountability percentiles above 10. And important to note, they do not have low-performing subgroups. That would otherwise put them in the category of requiring assistance. So, for us as a district... Oh, no offense. Yeah, that's the official name.
My bad.
So, our big takeaways, and we'll get a little bit more specific about the data for each of our content areas and also for the other accountability measures, is that in both ELA and math, there is an indication here that the overall slide has subsided and that we're seeing recovery. So, we are, you know, we're on the recovery path toward those 2019 levels in some areas. Grade 10 ELA has actually returned to our pre-pandemic levels. So, that's an area where they're on a path forward and, you know, we expect to see continued progress there. There's also some evidence of gap closing. So, we'll get a little bit more into that, but there are some evidence that they're closing the achievement gap for some of their subgroups. Math data is just about flat compared to 2022, but you're going to see some, some kind of big changes in grades five and six. We do see slight decreases in science performance, but we're seeing stabilization at those lower grades, not as much at the high school level. Grade five is, is a standout for us because we actually did see some, some growth in achievement in terms of the, both ELA and math. Overall, we have significant ground to make up. And I think if you've taken a look at some of the school-based data, and we can certainly see it when we look at a range in percentiles from, you know, the third percentile up to the 57th, that we've got this overall district thing going on, but there is so much variation from school to school that a lot of our work has to be focused on kind of personalizing that experience for the schools. So, as a district, we've, we're looking to focus lots of energy, lots of resources, time, money into supporting all of our schools. And we're putting a lot of, I don't know, putting a lot of faith and a lot of hard work into an internalization process in all of our schools. So, we are kind of hanging our hats on the fact that if our teachers really understand the content and they know their students and they know where they want students to go, that they can do this work. We can support them to do the work. But for the first time ever, we're looking, we're really looking at our, our subgroups. I know that, you know, every year as a group, we talk about we have to do something for our English learners, we have to do something for our students with disabilities. But this is really the first year that we've kind of gone public with a statement like that and actually called out our students with disabilities and our English language learners in, in our district-wide priority. And, and we're doing that because we feel like we are in a, in a good place to do that. And that in focusing our energy, our time, our resources on unpacking the content, on supporting teachers to deliver it to the students who need it the most, that all of our students are going to benefit. Because at the end of the day, our teachers are going to have a better command of the content, of the skills that they are trying to build in students, and of the work that they have to do. So, as a district, we're, we've, we're subscribing to this system for instructional improvement. We've done a lot of work in the last few years, you know, in identifying and making really clear to folks what, you know, the kind of work that we need to do, identifying four key resources that students have to experience on a daily basis in their schools. And we've looked to this system for instructional improvement to get the work done. And so, you know that we've, we've had a huge focus on high-quality instructional materials. Millions of dollars have been spent on getting grade-level resources and high-quality resources into students and teachers' hands. That's one piece of it. We are spending a lot of resources on the professional development associated with the resources as well as just building skills and content knowledge in our teachers. We're doing work with our instructional leadership teams at our schools. Some of that includes coaching at the school level for those instructional leadership teams. We're compensating people for participating on instructional leadership teams for teachers outside the school day. The internalization work is really happening through our PLCs. And I think you'll hear each of the directors talk about that work in those PLCs. And we're, we're investing in this, you know, the observation and feedback in instructional coaching for teachers. So, really trying to leverage the evaluation process in a way that is supportive to, to teachers in terms of, in terms of building them, but also outside of that evaluation process, using coaches and other staff to provide real-time coaching, embedded coaching for our teachers, and being able to offer people constructive feedback on a regular basis outside of the evaluation system. Before we move into content-specific data, does anybody have any questions or?
I have a quick one.
Sure.
So, you mentioned, we know we have a bunch of curriculums, right? A lot of them are new, right? So, how much work is being done with the coaches and the teachers? Is there a lot of work? A lot, I know you just mentioned feedback, but they are getting majority of the say of how these curriculums are working, right? They go back to the coaches, the coaches go back to you guys. It's, that's the system. But how often is that happening?
So, in schools, we're supporting teachers around implementation on a, on a weekly basis at the very least. So, there's structured time during the day to, to support teachers around that. And really taking a look at the internalization process of that content and of those skills and of the students on, on a weekly basis. We made a significant investment this year asking all of our schools to, to make sure that if a teacher was teaching both math and ELA, that they were getting that support on a weekly basis instead of rotating one week ELA, one week math, things like that. So, we're, we're investing more time and effort there. We're doing work, I mean, the leads meet with, building-based leads monthly. In addition to that, we're doing focused work with leader development that's happening through the development of teacher leaders, in some cases who are supporting their peers on a regular basis in schools, and also leads development that is for coaches and department chairs who are doing the work, who have been doing the work, but really kind of perfecting their skill set on how they can best support, best support teachers outside of an evaluation kind of situation.
Okay. I just want to know what this system was like and how, how it was going down
Yeah.
every week, every day, every month, whatever. Let's tag you.
What would be, in your estimation, the boldest action that you all are proposing as a leadership team to address these scores? Throughout this entire presentation, all these slides and everything else, what is the boldest action of the couple of them? So, I can kind of get a feel for where you all are at from your whole entire team, from superintendent to all of our team.
I mean, I think that, well, what we came here was to present the data. I think that there's a lot more that goes into the data than, this is one standardized test that all students take, one indicator. The boldest action is to get our kids to school so that our kids can learn. That's the boldest action. We can, we have to partner with our families to make sure the kids are in front of us. We can't do our jobs. And our kids don't come to school ready to learn. There's a lot of SEL issues that are preventing students from learning. Our teachers have to play counselor. They have to do all of this SEL stuff before they even get to academics. That's, you know, we can say, we can spin it, we can do whatever we want, but we need to make sure kids are in front of us and that we are supporting our kids and our staff to deal with the students that are in front of them so that they are ready to learn. Our kids are, we struggled before COVID. COVID just added more, increased the gaps significantly. We are, what I see in the data is that we have stopped the bleeding, right? In most of our schools, with the exception of maybe three schools that still declined that we are addressing. But we have to stop that and turn that around. But that, just because, and I know that we have invested significantly and we are grateful for that. We have consistent curriculum. We have staffing that we've invested in. But just those investments aren't going to, just because you're throwing those investments in place, it doesn't mean you're going to have automatic change. Change, sustainable change takes time, three to five years to turn around. My, what I believe is, the boldest action, even though it's probably not the most popular answer right now, is to stay the course because we are instructionally in the best place we have been in several years. We really are. That doesn't mean that we have to, we don't have to think outside the box and think about some of the ways to, I mean, our middle schools are hurting. We have to figure out what's going on there. We have some feeder schools that are hurting too. So, we are exploring some options for that. I, I mean, I'm a firm believer in the pre-K to eight model. I think we have to invest and explore that and, and probably look at that as yet another option. Does, do I think that every single school needs to be pre-K eight? No. But I do think that we probably need to look at some... But I do think that we probably need to look at some options. But I think right now the boldest action is getting our kids to school in front of us so we can do our job.
So what did it look like when you, I'm assuming based on that response of our attendance, that you must have done a correlation between MCAS scores and attendance? And what does that data look like?
Yep.
Because I don't see it here. But I'm assuming that when you did a data, it's called data dives or whatever you call them.
Right, yep.
You must have that data that indicates, that backs up that statement. Because it's easy to say, oh, we want our kids to be here, and I get it. Showing the hot data is, I think, a different. You might be right. I'm just, uh...
Well, I, I agree. I'm not, I, well, I'd like to think I'm right, but I, I'm not, I don't have all the answers. But what I'm saying is, if you look at, we have a 40% chronicity absence rate, right? So what would we expect when our kids are missing at least 18 to 20 days of school and some more, right? We, and we're leaving our kids behind, our students with disabilities in record numbers, right? We have to...
I'm not disagreeing. What I'm suggesting is, if you say there's 40% of the kids that have, that chronically absent, or whatever the number is, theoretically, 40, the lowest 40% of the MCAS scores should be very similar to those kids.
They are.
Theoretically, you know, so like within range. Because I think that's, when I say bold action, there's not, there's no magic.
There is not, you're right.
We spent $10 million more dollars every year for the last four years, so 40 million didn't do it. We've been talking about K to eight for a while, we've been talking, so when I say bold, I don't have the answer either. I can just tell you that this is not a good, these scores are not good. And I don't think anybody here is striving to be back to 2019 scores. Because in 2019, we were not good then. So if, if that's what we're using as a test to say, ooh, if we could only get back to 2019, we would like champion that. I'm not sure anybody thinks that's a good idea either. But how do you get beyond it? So all I'm suggesting is that the attendance piece, if that's what it is, I think for the full committee, summarizing what is your action.
Yep.
We could look at slides all day, and they're going to tell us the same story that you could probably do in three or four slides. That I, I personally wanted to see, what is the actions? Now, I might disagree with some of them, I might have suggestions, whatever it is. But I, synthesizing your teams, uh, what are you going to do differently than what we've done before? We went, we've been over this. Last year, the scores were lousy, we created evaluations for you and all of your team and principals that were based on these numbers. So if I'm just...
If I can just, I, I understand what you're saying, right? And I think that it's, it's human nature to say, okay, let's change course, we got to try something else, we got to try something else. But that's not, we need stability, if nothing else. You are right, we shouldn't be striving for 2019. But the folks at DESI use that as, if we see that we are getting back to those levels, that means that we have stopped the decline and then we can start pivoting, right? And that's what we're doing. We're, certainly, I, we've done data dives. Everybody, human nature, right, is, is to say, oh, we're ahead of the district, we beat the district. And I said, you can't say that. Because as a district, we're not where we want to be or need to be. Chase the high-performing districts, those are the ones that we should be aiming for, right? But we have to, we have to stop that slide and then we have to, you know, uh, focus our, our efforts. I think that impact, some of the impact on this data, I'm not going to make excuses, we had a staffing issue, right? We had people that are, were not, uh, were new, we had substitutes, we had pairs covering classes, we had administrators covering classes. All of that impacts the data. Would the data be, uh, you know, through the roof? No, it's not, it's not going to be like that in a year. It's going to take its time. We need to make sure, all I'm saying is, we have a concerted effort, we have focused on teaching and learning for the first time in many years. And I feel like we are in the midst of a turnaround. We've seen it happen, we've seen it at Henry Lord, we've seen it at Dorn, we've seen it at CUS. We've seen it happen, we know we can do, we're seeing, we saw it at Laterno, we're seeing it at Talbot. We have three middle schools in the third percentile, three very different third percentiles, three very different percentiles, because they're in three different places, those three middle schools. I, I think as a team, we are very, very, very well aware of that data, we are keeping track of that data, we are talking to our administrators. Evaluation tool, I'm a firm believer that we use the evaluation tool to build capacity. It's not, your data's not good, because there are many factors that impact data. What are you going to say to a teacher? Your data is the worst data in, in the third-grade cohort, so you're going to be missing. Are you going to be unsat? I don't believe that that's the only factor. The evaluation tool should be a way for us to grow our people.
Yeah, I, I'm not giving you a hard time or disagreeing with you. What I think is, though, we, we're looking for feedback, so bring it to the full committee and just bring it so that everybody's on the same page with what it is. Your answer and expounded upon, to me, is much more valuable than all of these slides put together. So I think acknowledging the fact that this is, these numbers are not good, I think that's the first step. And then saying, here's what I think we're going to be doing. And then we have to trust that you are doing that with your team. We can agree to disagree, whatever it is. But I just think that analysis is what I was looking for versus, we've seen these same slides about the 20% for this, that. That's, we can't really do anything about it. When I say bold, you just, we just had a meeting where we said we had no certified math teachers at our alternative school. We have no special ed certified teachers at other places. Do you think that this is a surprise? If we don't have certified people in there? So when I say bold, what is your bold, and I'm not looking for an answer, but this is, what is your bold way to say, how can we get more certified people in to compete against other places? Whatever that means, I know what that means. It needs to come from you guys to say, we can't get certified math teachers. So should we just keep doing the same thing year on year and then we've got half the schools that are under the lowest 10%? Or do we say, timeout, we got to do something different here and negotiate some way to actually compensate people accordingly?
Yep.
Same thing with special ed. If we have some, we can't find people for the most needy special ed classrooms, we should just keep doing the same thing again and we'll have 5%, whatever the number was in here, 5% of kids meeting standards, uh, in special ed at the high school? Just keep doing the same thing. That's, when I say bold, that's kind of what I'm saying. Just say, timeout, we have to do something that's totally out of the box, totally different. We did that with the subs. You brought an issue to us, we all helped you just try to figure it out and said, we need to pay subs $155. So why are we doing that? Because at $120, we weren't getting anybody. So at the rates we currently pay, we're not getting anybody for a sub separate classroom or a math teacher or whatever, something bold. So I'm just trying to get you to, I could question all these numbers all day, but that's not going to do anything. Really, it's just a matter of...
It's a good point.
I'd rather have you just say, this is where we're at. You know, when I mentioned the evaluation, it was only to say, we all talked about how we're going to put the scores in, like, these targets into your evaluation. Now, if I was to just say that's the only factor, then you and all your team are going to get a bad evaluation. In essence, you could be busting your butt, you could be doing all kinds of great things. But based on those scores, everybody's going to get a bad evaluation, which I don't think is fair either. So I think just acknowledging it and trying to figure out how we're going to move on and then set some targets. If you said K to eight, I'm so sick and tired of hearing about K to eight schools already. Because the only thing we haven't done in the last two years is not one thing to move forward towards it. So just take, take it bold and say, you know what, these aren't working. I keep seeing Watson School on here, the lowest, or whatever that thing was, all the way to the right with their targeting. I remember two years ago, or four years ago, saying to you or whoever was in touch, how many more, how much more resources are we going to put into that same school before we do something different down there? Oh, were the scores, I think it was before you.
Watson will get out this year, watch.
But my point is, how long have we been saying it and the same thing is happening? So I would say, let's just go, go for the dust though.
You brought up Watson, that's a very good example, actually, because we have poured resources in there, we have supported that, that school in a way. A couple of years ago, you know, we went in there and supported them, we trade, uh, supported the structure of other supporting teachers, et cetera. And I, Watson probably would have gotten out with it because they're, they remained at 10, which means that their, you know, uh, level was probably slightly over. We'll have this conversation, we'll be celebrating Watson getting out.
But if that's the case, right?
It takes time.
So this is my point, though. If the Watson, like, you know the, the picture's up there. So if the Watson is a situation where you have a different opinion other than what's on that screen with the red line on inside of it, all I'm asking for is, when you present to the full committee, you have a one-page round Watson.
Yep.
Here's what I think on Watson, here's what I think on Henry Lord, here's what I think on, because then it's going to give us a perspective on, like, not having to, like, figure it out. We all know the score isn't terrible, but you, there's a different opinion that you have.
Yep.
You said Talbot was different than the other.
Yep.
Well, they're all 3%. So I understand why, because I happen to know some of the other pieces. But tell us that in that one-page here versus all of these slides. That's, that's really what I'm trying to say.
But that's, that's actually good feedback, so.
Yeah, so we're going to skip to ELA action thing.
So on this slide, you'll see that we separated this into two, two different areas. One is previously in place and will continue to support. And I would also say that we should have added or expand, which I think we did on our other, on our draft, and then the new to our plan. And so as you can see, Wonders K to five, we will continue to support that work in buildings. We're in our third year of implementation at grade three to five. All schools are using it and internalization of that content will make instruction more effective. The second thing listed is the UConn and Hill partnership. And so we now have two cohorts of that work. Cohort one started two years ago and the new cohort, cohort two, with Watson, Vivera, Sylvia, and Laterno, started this year. And so our first cohort is working on tier-two practices. And so taking the work from the tier-one and bringing it into tier-two to, um, provide supplemental work and instruction to our students who require tier-two. And then our cohort two, the four new schools, are beginning the tier-one practices. That's enhanced core reading instruction in Wonders content. At this point in the year, the cohort one has not started. On November 7th, they're receiving their first PD. And the work will launch during, at the start of their next inquiry cycle. And then cohort two has already started with data collection and coaching. And so those four schools have, already have coaches in their buildings working specifically on, um, the enhanced core reading instruction practices. The third thing that you see listed is consistent support of our digital platforms. Lexia Core Five is up and running. Lexia Power Up, which is for the struggling and striving readers in grade six to eight, is also up and running, but we are running into a barrier as our new program is being lifted by the teachers. So it's, it's difficult to have kind of both things happening simultaneously. They're working on it, there's alternate ways of engaging have been, have been offered. And we are launching a district-wide incentive alongside other digital platforms that will hopefully boost the engagement both inside and outside of school. The next thing listed is our writing revolution initiative that we've had running for a couple of years now. We continue to offer courses to teachers that are new to the district or that need a refresher. It's also part of our PLCs where the coaches are supporting the work of the writing revolution. And this summer, we had a teacher work group come together and they received additional doses of PD in bite-sized chunks and then created curriculum-aligned activities to be used across the district. The next thing is training special educators and interventionists in tier-three intervention materials. So last year, we were lucky enough to purchase Project Read Linguistics and Framing Your Thoughts materials. And over the summer and this year, we have trained a lot of special educators and interventionists. You can see 48 educators in K to three were, um, were trained in SY23 and then 49 so far this year. And then in fourth grade and up, 56 educators have been trained in SY24 in the reading interventions. And our writing intervention PD begins on November 1st. So that's, that's exciting. As far as supporting that work, um, Mrs. Oberchain has her coordinators and supervisors also attending that training. And they are direct support to the teachers in the buildings in implementation alongside literacy coaches who are also trained. We continue our journey in making all, uh, having all educators engage in the science of reading and aligned pedagogy. And so in K to two, we had 113 educators trained in SY23 and 19 so far in SY24. And we have a plan for an additional 50 as the school year continues. We intend to expand this year to include 50 educators in the grade three to five science of reading course and also expand into the adolescent literacy course, which is, um, the science of reading for grade six and above. And we'll have three cohorts of spec, of educators in grade six to eight. And still continue with our providing and expanding direct support to our school-based literacy leads through joint observation, feedback, PLC observations, planning for those PLCs, facilitation of professional development, one-on-one support, and our monthly meetings. Any questions about previously in place and will continue to support before I move into the new question?
Say again.
When, uh, were you assessing, using ANET to assess ELA as well?
Last year?
Yeah.
Yes.
So one of the things that, in my mind, was always, over the past seven years, we were talking about the value of how much we spent on it and what that was showing as far as improvements. And then the scores are what they are. Were they equal? Were they, were they falsely, uh, higher than what we anticipated? Or is this not a surprise based on ANET?
It was not a surprise in middle school specifically. In fifth grade, we did see that there was an increase in scores over the course of last year. And so it was nice to see that there was a slight bump in fifth grade. We struggled in third and in fourth and in six to eight. We, we knew that that was happening. We, we made moves during the course of the year to try to stop the bleeding and made strides, but didn't.
So where does that fit in the previously in place of that?
Yeah, so, um, we actually are changing what we're using as a benchmark. We're moving into previously released MCAS through the illuminate platform. And we'll use it in a very similar way in that we will have teachers engage in that assessment and rip it apart as far as what makes the piece complex so that they can use that information as they plan forward. It is not different than ANET, but what we did notice is that with the ANET assessments, the level of complexity was very high as compared to what was happening on, on MCAS. And so you almost could feel like this, um, tension in the room around, yes, I understand how hard MCAS is, but this is over the top for teachers. And so I feel, and what we've already experienced is teachers feeling that the MCAS is going to be a better and more fair assessment of our students and it will help them in making the instruction match the river of that assessment.
So did I miss that we're no longer using ANET? So that's, we're not spending any money on that?
We are not.
We, we, in the absence of having consistent benchmarks, that's when we used it. And now we built our own benchmarks, we invested in illuminate where we have the ability to create our own, and now we have common assessments across the board.
So, I'm trying to...
No.
I recall us saying that the reason why we went to ANET was because it was aligned, it was, am I not sure of that?
No, no, you're right. And we didn't have common assessments across the board at that time. So we knew that it was going to be something that we would use until we could build our own assessments. Now, we have the ability to build our own assessments. We purchased illuminate, which is, allows us to build our own assessments that are aligned, that we're able to do that. So we transitioned, transitioned out of ANET.
And it must be in the fine print of illuminate when that came first, that we were eliminating this, or?
No, I think we did, but we'll get that for you.
Yeah, just curious to see if I missed it, how I missed it. But I was just of the belief that, going back four years ago, whatever, when we did that, we were told, this is the aligned one, this is, so now we're going in a different direction? Just surprising.
No, we still want aligned benchmarks, right? So that, there was a purpose for them, we didn't have any. So we, that's what ANET did, it plugged in that hole. Now, we're able to create our own, we have a system to do that, so we're going to pay for that and have the ability to do that. It's not, we're not going in a different direction where we're saying it's a totally different assessment. We're able to create our own assessments now because we have illuminate.
If the test is released and you know it, like, hello, we haven't been doing that over the years since some tests have been?
Yeah, at, at...
Probably pockets, I'm guessing.
At top, what happened was, when, but the, when MCAS went next gen, there weren't enough released items for us to build benchmark assessments over the course of the year to have three or four full-blown assessments, there just weren't enough released items. So over the years, as the bank has increased, there were two pieces to our partnership with ANET. One was that we were using their assessments and then the other piece was that we were using them to do coaching in our schools. And we, it very specific to the data piece, but we've built our own capacity to do that so that we don't need their coaching anymore. so that we don't need their coaching anymore and the MCAS banks are such that we could build our own assessments.
Yeah, I can get it.
And just, so the practices that we use during ANET are still being brought into the, this new assessment tool that we're using, the illuminate assessment tool. We have the adoption and support of Amplify ELA at all middle school grades, PD and coaching through Amplify, as well as coaching, PD and network support through the Hill literacy. Both of those serve to build up teachers as, the coaching is for teachers, as well as building up the academic leads in their, in their knowledge of Amplify and the practices. There has been a, our, our, MLL FC classrooms are using core materials in grades K to eight. And so in K to five, they are using Wonders L and the anchor text from the regular Wonders curriculum. And so there's alignment there. And then in grade six to eight, we intend to have an amplified pilot, which will be, they'll start a little bit later than, than, they haven't started yet, so they have a staggered start time. And the reason is because we just want to give more access to grade level content to students in the developing stages of language acquisition. And Ms. Agarola will talk more about that. Lexia Power Up at Derby, we are using it with our multilingual learners and specific to foundational rooms and our students with disabilities in substantially separate classrooms in grades nine through twelve. When you looked at, when we looked at the data, we did see that there was a gap closing happening and so we will continue that practice. There has been a focused collaboration across departments in all content areas. I have been working very closely with Ms. Agarola in making sure that we have a language focus when we are internalizing our content. And so there have been several sessions with academic leads to support their understanding of the WEITA 2020 framework and how it comes alive with teachers. We had one this morning. And then on November seventh, we will roll that out to ELA teachers at the secondary level as well as K to five teachers. And the high school is also doing similar work with Ms. Squires and the ELA lead. And then additionally, with students, with the special ed department, we have had a very heavy focus on supporting our special educators in what to do to close gaps in students, specifically around tiered interventions. We've purchased research-based materials and we've trained up, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago. And so the other piece is that we have common protocols across schools, which is really, really important. Our internalization with a focus on language. During that internalization, we start with determining the objective, the standard and the assessment. And then we plan backward from there. We engage in a high-level overview of the lesson or the text. We analyze that fully and then we plan for lesson facilitation and implementation, which includes crafting questions and planning for differentiated instruction in the classroom. And another piece that's really important to mention in this is that we're using an equity pause protocol for data analysis, which puts the data of our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners on the table. And that becomes part of every conversation that we're having in PLC, whether it be we're internalizing and talking about multilingual learners or students with disabilities, or we're analyzing the data and looking specifically at students with disabilities or multilingual learners and looking at student work or after assessment. And then finally, we have a common PLC plan and that goes across content areas where we operationalize the process for supporting teachers and content and pedagogy growth. And we're seeing it come alive and that's the importance.
Any questions? No questions at this time?
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Foley?
We are going to move on to math and discuss what we've been doing and what's new for this year.
So I'll go through the first column quickly. It's divided the same way that ELA is and science in place right now and what we'll continue to support. Illustrative mathematics in Carnegie are our core curriculum. We'll continue to internalize our resources. Illustrative mathematics will continue to receive professional development. We mainly do the professional development through virtual sessions for new teachers. Carnegie does in-person professional development on our early release days. We continue with the use of all our digital platforms. ST Math to support core at the elementary. Mathia for Carnegie. Mathia, we continue with the support and coaching. And a lot of our coaching this year will be focusing on Mathia. It's different than other digital resources where if you look at MathStream or ST Math, they're in addition to those resources. But with Carnegie, you have a textbook and you have Mathia and you can't do one without the other. It's, it'll be like two days in Carnegie and then one day in the Mathia digital resource. So we continue to do professional development. Teachers need support with pulling small groups and using that data. I Ready and Elevation, this year we've done professional development in all the middle school, the secondary schools in order for them to analyze the data at all of the diagnostic assessments, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. Elevation math is something that was new and came in last year. So we wanted to observe it for one year and then bring in professional development so we could help guide teachers in the best way to structure their classroom using that digital resource for foundational students. We continue to support the design of all PD in service to the instructional priority. We do this through our math lead meetings. We plan together, survey what teachers need and then develop the professional development for the early release days and full days. I'll continue to differentiate support based on the need of the math leads. I go in and observe with math leads for individual grade levels or teachers. We construct feedback to make sure that we're normed using the TNTP tool. We'll observe PLC and give feedback or we'll just discuss PD planning based on their school's need or one-on-one problem solving. New to our plan this year, as Stephanie mentioned, we have new district benchmarks. We wanted to utilize the illuminate platform. Also, some of the standards were being taken to another level in the old assessments, which were not giving us accurate data. So the new assessments this year will consist of MCAS released items, items taken from the curriculum resources and any ANET questions that the teams thought were useful. When we created these assessment teams, it was with each, a group of two leaders, math leaders, did the assessments for a grade level. And then they would receive feedback from two additional leads, then it went to a teacher team. So the teachers were able to look at all of the new assessments, give us feedback for change. What we'll do at the end of the year is analyze the data consistently through the year, but then get feedback from all of the schools to see if they want to see any changes made to the new benchmarks. Checkpoints, it's the first year that we're administering these across grade levels, K to twelve, utilizing the curriculum resources. There was a need for smaller formative assessments based on feedback from teachers, from leads and from principals. So right now, we have developed for every unit and for every module, we'll do one-to-two mini-assessments that consist of three to five questions. Students will take them on the digital platform. This is also additional practice for them. They need to learn the skill of taking what's on the computer, putting it to paper, then from the paper back into the computer. So we're starting with grades three to twelve. We'll transition grade two at the mid-year for the mini-assessments.
Can I refer back quickly just to the benchmarks?
Yep.
Do you mind?
Sure.
When did we start the process of developing the new benchmarks?
The process started in the end of April. We started talking about it and then we put the teams together. The assessments were created May through end of June, early July. Then those teams received feedback July to August and then August to September with the teacher teams. And then Beth Lewis is uploading the new benchmarks into illuminate.
Okay, thank you. I just had to get a time.
Can I ask you a question on the second one? So you mentioned the formative assessments, the three to five questions are monthly, like that's new to the plan?
This, this is new. If you look at illuminate, illuminate has checkpoints embedded in the platform. So it wasn't a consistent practice across schools. We had some schools who were utilizing it. They would do it for some units, but not others. We just recognized that we needed to do consistent across all schools. Principals wanted more data points. And in terms of just equity for students, one of the conversations I had had with special ed was when you sit down at a table and you're analyzing data to make recommendations for referrals, we have inconsistent data sources that we're utilizing. Teachers were creating their own assessments and it was just inconsistent.
So I just, it blows my mind how that can even be possible. Like, I agree with what you're saying. It just blows my mind of how that's possible that we had a program that we paid, I don't know, five hundred thousand for or more and the directive wasn't, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying how, as a system. We created, we spent all this money and it says, we're going to use illuminate and I might be using the word, the wrong words. They have a math program that says, you're going to do three to four question benchmarks ten times a year. How did it happen that we don't have people doing that? I just?
I mean, we do now. I think it was also an inconsistent practice where some people did it on the digital platform, some people did it on paper. I needed them to do it in the platform so students.
Yeah, maybe we can just, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it's a valid question to say, how would we have paid for something?
Yeah, I mean, one of the, and I'm not, it's not necessarily a discussion for right now, I get it, but we did, I would say, I don't know, maybe four or so years ago through the joint labor management committees, the curriculum instruction and assessment committee actually came to an agreement to only do three to four district assessments. So that when, that, that the district would collect data on, that, that was the agreement with that, through that committee without, with the FREA. So coming out of that process, that's what we did with ANET basically for ELA math and any other district benchmarks. And so coming out of that, the district collection of the data. So we are going to schools and saying, you know, here are the, here are the checkpoints or, but we like couldn't collect the data at that point.
For that, what you just said to be valid, it has to go against what she just said. And that's the problem that I have, is that she just said, we had plenty of places that were doing it anyway and other ones didn't. And your answer is that we couldn't because the union contract said they can't.
We couldn't require people to do it in the platform because the agreement was that we would only do three to four assessments a year.
And I'd like further data on, what, what does that mean? And I don't need it now. So we have these subcommittees that don't really have part of the contract. Was that in the contract? Or was that in the side agreement that the school committee never knows anything about?
They reported out to, I mean, this, I wasn't in the position, but I remember the joint labor management committees going and reporting out what their focus areas to the school committee.
Where is it saying in the contract that we can't, when we bought illuminate for, let's just call it five hundred thousand dollars? Where is it say in the contract that says we can't implement the recommendations of the illuminate program that we just spent five hundred thousand dollars?
Well, we can now. We're doing it now.
Why didn't, why couldn't we do it before then? Do we have a new agreement?
That was part of the.
It wasn't mandated by me. It was an agreement of the team and it was brought back to schools and everybody was in agreement. I did not mandate.
So like, and nothing's changed?
We, we just started doing it now.
I understand that.
Bought eliminate this year.
Illustrative.
Illustrative now.
But she just says that we had people not doing it last year.
It wasn't required.
And now it's required? Under the joint management labor committee?
So we can track progress.
Has the joint management labor committee changed their wording?
They, we haven't met as joint labor management committees since COVID. We met with one, the teaching and learning team. That wasn't the focus last year.
So you understand the question, right?
I know what you're saying.
She just said that the reason why we didn't implement it was because we had this quasi-agreement or whatever that said we couldn't do it. You say as the math head that we didn't implement it for the year. And I'm saying to myself, what in the hell is going on here? Because?
Well, I was assessing what schools were doing last year in terms of checkpoints, unit assessments, getting the lay of the land and noticed that there was inconsistent data, checkpoints within illustrative.
So I don't even remember. I think you will probably hear in the middle, like you just come in in the middle. Can you please get a copy of what the direction was to all the schools related to this? Because at that point, it's going to tell us either we have a problem with people, just don't do what we say, or is anybody not holding people accountable when they just do whatever they want instead of, we've gone over this, this committee two years ago to say, no, we're going to use this. If we buy this platform, we're going to use it. We're going to bid fidelity. All of those things, I think it's even in your goals, Madam Superintendent.
Yeah, and we are do, we are using the platform.
Just rewind back and then get us something on it because I, I'm hearing different things. How do you, thank you.
Monthly calendars to support the scope and the sequence. After reviewing data, you can see that towards the end of the units, they're not being, they're not being fully rolled out. And that really is just with the new curriculum. Teachers are getting used to it. The units go way past into June. So what we did was we developed a monthly calendar so teachers could see, you have a scope and sequence that's in illustrative and in Carnegie. What we did was month by month, week by week, teachers could see how those lessons were rolled out and they can just make strategic decisions by month on what lessons they might be able to eliminate based on their student population, the needs of the student or parts of lessons that they might need to internalize. The evaluation of academic leads expanded. Last year, I was an evaluator. This year, it's just been expanded. I had principals who reached out who are fully capable and have been evaluating, but wanted more content-specific feedback to their leads. Increased collaboration across departments in service of our instructional priorities. Stephanie talked a little bit about this. I'm on the opposite end. I'm working with both MLL and the special ed department, but I'm leaning more towards the students with disabilities and working with Assistant Superintendent Oberchain and her team. We are, we have rolled out the language acquisition training for all math leads at the elementary level. This week, we will do it with the secondary level with the support of Ms. Agarola's team. We developed a professional development for one of the schools in the district and we will be rolling this out to all math leads and then on November seventh. It is internalizing the content in math lessons while unpacking IEPs. So we will go, I will, it will be co-facilitated by a math leader and a supervisor in the special ed department where we will take teachers through X two and how to, how to look at PLEP A and their vision and just start to unpack how we can support those students in a math lesson. We've also done observation of classrooms across two schools when we have programs that go from elementary leading into the middle school. I walked with the special ed department and we were able to make recommendations and just think through how we could support schools and classrooms. One-to-one and small group professional development in the elementary schools. At the end of last year, with our continued implementation of illustrative, we surveyed teachers, we surveyed the math, math leads, and we also had one-on-one conversations with principals who attended. And what came out of that, many things came out of that, but the most important thing was that educators were asking for more support unpacking the curriculum resources. They have support from their coaches or their math department heads in the school, but they wanted more global district support on unpacking them. And we decided to go with coaching and provide one-to-one professional development in schools. So they're, they'll begin receiving that now. Common expectations across schools. Again, Stephanie brought some of this up. There's common protocols across schools where math now is having PLC weekly. I also had discussions with the secondary team around what was happening in terms of honors accelerated program. We had it in, across the middle schools, but we just had conversations around the curriculum and expectations for that. Common PLC plan for all content areas. I follow the model. Stephanie had developed a slide on what those PLCs should look like. I modified it from math. So we just make sure that we're doing and looking at the same things across content areas and grade levels. And the lead development training, that's happening right now with lead teachers and coaches and department heads across the district where we all attend as content leaders.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you.
So for science, um, many, many of the same things are in place in science that you've heard about from ELA and math. We are continuing to roll out and support our high-quality instructional materials that are grounded in Open Saiad. It's farthest along in the middle school. We're in year three of the middle school cohort where by the end of this year, we will have teachers who get through the entire curriculum. Like the plan and the pilot that we were part of was two units the first year, four units the second year, now all six at every grade level in the third year. That's going to be delayed somewhat for some teachers because we've had turnover. So I have teachers that are really in year one of this and have to really, and have to, we're working with them to kind of stay supported and on track, but they may not be proficient yet to deliver all six units. But I do have schools and unit and teachers who will get through the entire curriculum at the middle school level this year, which is, which is a plus. The high school did the field test for two years and we're now rolling out released units for high school. So our high school team is continuing that there for bio, physics, and chemistry with Open Saiad. And we've started field testing of the elementary units at Sylvia and Doran. Sylvia is all-in K to five. All their teachers are experiencing these units and providing feedback to the developers. And Doran has incorporated this grades three through five. They felt at the time last year when we had to commit that they had spent and invested all this time and energy in getting their K to two teachers to be proficient in delivering Project Lead the Way. That they made the decision to stay with the Project Lead the Way curriculum for K to two until released items are a real thing. So we've started to see this work, see this work for Open Saiad at two schools. We've done some walks already this year and they've embraced the curriculum. We're hearing accountable discussions with kids. We're he, we're seeing differences in instruction and we're excited about how that is now going to be vertically aligned. Two years from now, K to, K to, K to high school, which.
Will there still be a continuance of Project Lead the Way?
It will probably live more in our STEM areas with our STEM teachers and have this core science in Open Saiad for our core curriculum. And it'll allow those two vertical pathways up to Durfee where we have some Project Lead the Way happening at the CTC and in science and math, for computer science and, and biomed. So it'll kind of support both of those tracks.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, learning walks have been more frequent. We have, as, as a result of the field tests and the work elementary and high school, we have partners from Boston College, OEI, the Equity Initiative, that support all the Open Saiad professional learning that our teachers go to and then work with us in our schools to help support teachers in shifting their pedagogy, to be shifting the thinking, the deep thinking to students. And so I've been on walks already at high school, elementary and middle will be coming up in another week. To be able to look at the practices and we're seeing changes in practices on the walks that we've been on this year. So teachers are becoming much more comfortable with the pedagogy and the approaches and are starting to really start to shift their practices, which was, was just a difficult thing in the beginning. Because this is so, high-quality curriculum is far more complex than any teacher, even the best of our master teachers have time to develop and teach and do all those other things. So having this curriculum available for our classrooms is, is going to make a difference. We're already seeing changes. We're doing some of the same things in science that you've heard about for ELA and math. We have now coaches for the first time, a science coach at Talbot. There's a science coach at Fonsica. And I'm working with those people to be able to support with their teachers within their schools. That's a different experience for science. Like, I don't have the cadre of coaches that, that my comrades have. So it's helping move some of the work forward faster, having those content area specialists to work and support other teachers.
And what coaches is something you foresee?
It would be, it would be a definite benefit. And, and I do think a lot of, of the building leads are starting to think about how, how could we shift some resources to maybe do that in the future? But we'll see more this year as that work moves forward. We have, as you know, invested in Explore Learning Gizmos that are computer simulations that are designed and developed, like the new, the new MCAS is going to be for grades five and eight. So I've been supporting that work in our schools. Our schools at elementary and middle have all participated for the last two years on the new MCAS rollout with the state. It's going to continue this year into next, so that in 2026, all schools across Massachusetts will be using this new MCAS approach, which is project-based, simulation-based, where students are using the data that they generate in these simulations to answer questions. So it's going to, got a whole different look and feel and we're supporting that work and going to be figuring out the long-term PD plan for our teachers to be able to make that transition. That's work that's happening this year. In terms of lesson internalization, our focus in science has done, we've done a lot of that work starting last January, December timeframe, I think, moving it into this year to support our multi-language learners. The lift was pretty high for our foundational teachers in lifting the new curriculum and then having this influx of multi-language learners last year. So I've worked with the MLL department to bring about and create a lot of professional development for our science teachers at the secondary level to be able to support our science rollout and to support the learn, our, our highest need learners and our multi-language learners and our students with disabilities. We're also continuing to support this MCAS planning and shifting our assessments to performance tasks instead of a lot of individual items that were like more the historical, the current MCAS. So we're kind of, we're shifting totally instruction and assessment and science. And that's work that I've been supporting and will continue to support.
Questions?
Just looking at the results, the pages, the science results by grade, it's showing that twelve percent of all of the eighth grade across the district meeting or exceeding.
Right. And some function of that is two things, I think primarily. The fact that year, year one and year two, we, we were only going out part of a curriculum. Right? Because we were making this instructional shift to Open Saiad. The other piece is we've experienced like math and special ed gaps of teachers. We've had lots of, we've had lots of positions unfilled in the last, like last year. Last year was, was a hard year for filling positions and keeping someone in them and have constant turnover in some of our schools. And I think that's impacted some of our schools.
It also says that, as I said before, 2019 is nothing to aspire to. There was thirteen percent decrease. So before Open Saiad and all these other things that we're talking about now, in 2019, we didn't have any of those. And we were twenty-five percent meet or exceed. Now we added all of this money and all of these things and now we're down to twelve percent.
So, so I will say, we are ahead of the curve in making the instructional and curriculum shifts that the state is going to expect and measure by the new MCAS. That's a shift that we've started at the beginning of our middle school pilot. And we're moving forward and seeing big instructional changes in the classroom through our learning walks. It's not reflected in this data because I think the data really is confounded by a lot of gaps. We had turnover of teachers. We had a lot of open positions last year. Many of our schools were filling teaching positions with paraprofessionals and things, just to be able to have a consistent adult to be doing.
So what you're saying, if I'm reading into what you're saying, is that we're training the teachers and students for something different than what they were assessed on?
We are.
And I, I think that's sort of a valid one-pageer to say, you look at these numbers, they're terrible.
They are terrible.
There's more to that than, like, so this is where I'm saying, like, I think picking these out because other people will do it, the public, so either we let it just be and go for it, or do we create our own narrative that we're aware of it? We acknowledge it, but we're going to do, this is why, whatever. The same thing on the page before that, the results by students with disability is four percent. Like, I mean, the high school one was five. This one was five. So these are just like the ones that I'm picking out as we're talking. The same thing, something's going to give. And I know we don't have the teachers in the, I haven't seen that data. I'd love to get it. How many teachers do we have non-certified in all of these different places and all of these different schools? We had this debate over last school committee. So if my school has none and her school has six, well, why the heck aren't we taking three of them and having, whatever? Like, you get what I'm saying. But throw in the data out and say, this is what we have. Because we're not going to make a bold decision on, like, what do we, why is it that we can't keep people? Because they're, it's a tough work and not ready for the work and they make ten thousand dollars less than they would have made if they were certified to teach in another place, whatever. So this is where I'm pulling out, like, I just think the one-pageers, the like paragraph means a lot more. I appreciate everything that you've been doing. I've been sat here and listened to Open Saiad more than I've ever, you know, thought I was going to listen to, but it's, whatever's going on over the years, I get what we're trying to do. When the results aren't there, it's like, what's next? So that's all. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you.
I mean, I think what I'm hearing here is that we have some great curriculum that we've invested in. But the reality is if we don't have students in the seats and teachers in the classroom, it's really kind of a waste of money, right? Not a waste, but you get my point. And what I've been hearing everyone say is that we have lack of teachers. So how do we expect this expensive, important curriculum to be taught by paraprofessionals who've not received the training to do such a job? And that's not on you, obviously, or anybody, you know, anybody necessarily sitting here. But I think when we talk about what we need to do to change these numbers, we have the curriculum in place. You're right, we need to help, we need to increase attendance. That's obvious. That's a no-brainer to me. If kids aren't in school, they're not learning. They're not going to pass whatever assessment test you give them if they're not there. And then you have the kids that do show up that may still be struggling, right? So that's a combination of people that are not going to make our numbers look very good. But I think we also need to really focus on getting teachers hired. I mean, now's the time. I, we got to pay, let's pay them more.
Well, we also need to be bold and recognize that working in urban settings such as ours requires some, whoops, will require us to be bold in how we compensate our teachers.
And I've said that. I don't, I don't see why we can't, I don't, to me, there is a difference between someone who is teaching in a traditional, you know, first-grade classroom and everything's hunky-dory and there's a few issues. And we're going to compare that same thing to a teacher who's teaching in one of our classrooms that maybe is dealing with more. And I understand that can change year from year, depending on what you have, you know, in your classroom. But certain teachers just need to get paid more. Sorry. So if that's what we have to go out there and do, then let's do it. Because we need special ed teachers, we need math teachers, apparently we need all teachers. So we need to stop paying them or we're not going to get them. And then we're going to be spending money on curriculum and we're going to be sitting here. And my colleague's going to say, we spent a lot of money on this and you're not showing me anything. And I get that. But in the same respect, how can we, if you're telling me, we started, I mean, almost every person here said, we use, but we didn't have the teachers in the classroom. But we had holes, not anybody's fault here. But, I mean, who's in charge of doing, of hiring teachers?
Principals.
All right. So let's get them on it. There's something that needs to be done. And I'm not saying they're not on it. They need more money. That's cool. They need to come and ask us because that's what we will do. I believe that's what all of my colleagues would do. Because we need teachers. But I can't tell principals what they should be paid. Because I'm not a principal. That's not my education. That's not my background, right? So the principals need to say, hey, Shelley, you know why I can't hire a science teacher? Because they can drive fifteen minutes over a bridge and get paid fifteen thousand more a year. Oh, really? Well, then we need to pay them twenty thousand more than they get paid in Somerset, if that's what we need to do to get them here.
That's true.
We live in an area where I was, you know, I, I work hybrid type of thing. So my, technically, my office in Holyoke. Western Mass, very different than out here, right? Western Mass, maybe, you know, Springfield pays well. Everything else relatively the same. You teach in Ludlow, ah, probably the same as if you're in Holyoke, whatever. We are in an area where I can drive an hour and be in Boston. I can be in Newport. I can be in Providence. I can be, there are so many places I could go that could pay more. Which is great to live here because we get to vacation all these cool spots. Not good we're trying to get teachers and we're not paying them. And then we're asking them to come in to a school that there's not probably going to be enough teachers at first, right? Because even if we hire some, there's still not going to be enough. So are they going to feel super supportive, right? So you kind of have to say, okay, we're going to hire you. We're going to give you a good salary and we're going to ask you to be patient. Because we're going to need to hire more support for you. To me, this is a no-brainer. And this isn't necessarily the conversation, this is an instructional group. But if we're talking about how we can't get numbers up, well, we need to get teachers, qualified teachers who are learning the curriculum we paid for to be able to implement it. So I think that's what you need to be telling your principals. Like, let's go. If they need, they want money, they got to ask, right?
They, they advocate for.
Yeah.
Right. We have contracts, et cetera, bargaining. But I will say that I wholeheartedly agree. I was in a classroom many, many years, so I know we could never pay teachers what they're worth, ever, no matter how much we pay them.
Agreed.
Because they work hard and, and they work much, much harder in high-needs areas. I don't want to take that away from anyone that works in a suburban area.
Of course not.
They work hard. Teaching is hard. And the kids that are coming to us today, this day and age, come with many more needs. They are significant, they are not ready to learn because there are many factors that are preventing them from being ready to learn. We have to address those issues also, so that it would be awesome if a teacher could actually teach for fifty minutes the entire period. But they are doing some SEL work prior to or interrupted by some SEL issues before they can get to the, and that factors in. Uh, uh, listen, I'm never going to sit here across the table and say the data is good enough because it's not. All I'm saying is, we cannot, teachers cannot take all of this data. Listen, I'll take it, I, that's, I'm the superintendent, right? I will take responsibility for that. But we're not going to put the data or the lack of progress on teachers.
No, I agree.
It's not entirely on them. There are things they can't control and we're asking teachers to be social workers first, right?
Yeah, they're social workers, they're nurses, they're parents.
And then teach.
I agree.
And then go ahead and, and go teach.
And while you're doing all that, teach some math.
Exactly.
It's not easy to do. I agree with you a hundred percent. It, you can't, there is a difference. I'm sorry. I will say it. I don't care who hears it. There's a difference between being a teacher in a nice little, what do you do, this little town out somewhere than it is to be in an urban community where we have a diverse population and people with more needs. There is a difference. And any teacher, teaching in those places, knows that. Some of them, that's probably why they're there. But there are also a group of teachers that want to be in this community. They want to be in an urban area. This is where they thrive, right? So we need to find those teachers, but then we need to pay them a lot more than we're paying them. Because turnaround, I don't know, that could be money, but it also could just be lack of support. Like, you want to hang in and you want to do the best by your class, but if you constantly feel overwhelmed at work and that you're dealing with SEL issues and are not able to teach because you don't have maybe other powers or support in that classroom to help you. I mean, you can be the best, but at some point, that's going to break you down too. You know? So we got to hire them consistently. And a lot of them.
And support.
Do you want to become a math teacher?
No.
I know a place. No?
Or an English teacher or a science teacher.
These are numbers, obviously, numbers are never reflective of one group. There's so many things. And I certainly never blame the teachers. You know, obviously, everything's a factor, but I wouldn't, not in the situations of daily, but this is like, and I hate to say like COVID, but, but guess what? It's still here. And the people that think it isn't are the people who weren't affected socially and emotionally by it. Because I know firsthand that there are still people dealing with that. So to say it doesn't exist anymore is a joke. We're still recovering.
That it impacted adults too.
Every, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, not just kids.
A lot of moving pieces.
Right? So all of that was just a lot and we're still kind of coming out and getting over that. And I get it. But again, you know, it's just, I don't know.
But Mr. Agar brings up a good point. Our data wasn't strong before COVID, right?
Exactly.
There's more to.
Want to make up.
There, there, and there's more to do to address those root causes so that we can move ourselves as a district. So, yes. I think COVID was a magnifying glass, right? And just added significantly to, to the issues we already had.
Right.
So amplified those issues. But we had issues before. And what we need to do is we need to make sure that we support, yes, we've invested a great deal making sure all of our teachers. And what we need to do is, we need to make sure that we support, yes, we've invested a great deal making sure all of our teachers have the resources they need, and they should. We added paraprofessionals, we added SEL liaisons, we added all, all those things. And now we have to fix those other factors that you just mentioned, factors that we're saying that are preventing kids from learning, so that everybody's running in the same direction, and we can make strides. Until we do that and acknowledge that that needs to be done, we're never going to do, we're always gonna be two steps forward, three steps back, two steps forward, three steps back. Yep.
I think it is, by everybody.
Yeah, we have to acknowledge it, and then we have to like, make a plan and move forward, right? Because, yeah, it, it, it's, it's, it's a complex issue.
It's acknowledged.
I might have to go back to school to become a math teacher.
All right, where are we?
We are. Finished silence.
So shockingly, um, there are not enough ESL teachers in public schools. Um, this is not a new problem, though, and this is not something that, um, even an increase in pay may help. I will, I was not an ESL teacher. For those of you that don't know my history, the Fall River Public Schools made me one. Um, I was an ELA teacher, and I was somebody who was interested in working with multilingual learners, and at the time, we had a program that offered me some courses that I could pay for, and I transitioned into working with multilingual learners in addition to working as an ELA teacher. Um, and that's going back about fifteen years, which is crazy, 'cause I'm only twenty-five. So I, I must've been ten when I was, I don't know, I don't know how that happened. So we also face a shortage of teachers. We face lots of challenges in the multilingual learners department. We do have some high-quality instructional materials. I will say honestly, with the exception of the American Reading Company and Wonders, I will be totally transparent about Cengage. We have, um, we have some focus groups going on. We are dealing with the tension between giving kids access to grade-level material and students who do not yet have English language proficiency to access that material. So when you look at Cengage, Cengage is a curriculum that is addressing ESL needs for students who are newcomers. Who exactly gets that curriculum, where, when, and how, is certainly up for scrutiny. And we are scrutinizing lots of our systems in the ESL department. We've had turnover in our leadership. And also, for those of you that don't know, there's been turn, there's been shifts in how we approach multilingual learners. So if you look on the right-hand side, rollout of WEATA 2020, although WEATA's framework shifted in 2020, shockingly, that wasn't the biggest news item in 2020, and the whole world was not focused in the year 2020 on English language development. We were focused on the pandemic. So really, um, it seems crazy, like, there'd be a question of like, well, why, Lisa, in 2023, are we focused on rolling out standards and a framework from 2020? Full transparency, I was at a director's meeting a couple of weeks ago, and other districts in the area have not even touched this. They're saying, yeah, we think that it'll be really important to do a systemic rollout of WEATA 2020, and we're not there yet. So Fall River's actually ahead of the curve that we're even talking about this, and training, as my colleagues, Ms. Patterson and Ms. Kennedy, um, have said, we are training our leads in WEATA 2020, putting us ahead of the curve. So, um, we also have added, you know, MLL coaches, were added to our budget last year. We have had some struggle finding MLL coaches, um, finding people that, if we don't have teachers and we have vacant positions, finding people with the years of experience in ESL to coach people is also a challenge. So we have some of those positions still vacant, but we are building up our MLL coaches, many of whom are new to coaching. So, um, they are working with department heads in buildings to support professional development, to support professional learning communities. So that's an area where we are growing and where we have people focused on English language development. Something that people don't always think about when they think about multilingual learners and ESL, ESL is something kids get forty-five to ninety minutes a day, but really, to instruct a student who's a multilingual learner, my department's really responsible for that child seven hours a day. So we can't just say, what's happening in ESL class, because frankly, whatever I do for forty-five minutes is not gonna move a kid if the other five and a half hours are not, if we're not all rowing in the same direction to help that student acquire language. So that's just something to keep in mind, that there's ESL class, but there's also this idea of sheltering content and, um, growing the student's experience throughout their entire school day. On the right-hand side, um, the revised ELSP process, English Learner Success Plans, are something that the state mandated for kids who are not making progress towards their targets. The state has decided that a student should exit ESL services within six years, and it, a child gets a target every single year. If they are not moving towards that target, we are supposed to have a plan for them. So we had a focus group over the summer that met, that really dove into what we were doing, how we can improve that process, and we are rolling out some new steps to that process this year, um, and trying to support our kids who are not making the progress as expected. As I mentioned, WEATA 2020 is up there. We are specifically at Durfee, we, we do have an ESL coach, and we have a department head. We've decided that the department head is really focused on that ESL class, as I mentioned. Our coach, um, who is wonderful, is working heavily in math this year to really think about what is happening with our MLLs when they're in other areas of the building outside of their ESL class. Thank you all very much for approving the WEATA Model interim benchmarks. Um, we are doing that right now. We are in the window of our first benchmark, so hopefully, you'll hear from me again with a report back on how wonderful and valuable that data is to our teachers, um, and hopefully, that will be soon. As you know, the wonderful team at Durfee has piloted a newcomer academy, and that is, we're getting, seeing some great initial results from that. It's something that's on the table for thinking about, how can we roll that down, what are we learning there that also might be helpful for our middle schools? So, um, that's something that's on the table. We're thinking about really what the newcomer experience is, what the newcomer experience needs to be. Um, as my colleagues have mentioned, we are partnering with content leads, and we are, our digital platforms, we are expanding our use of Lexia Core and Power Up with MLLs, and we are piloting Lexia English, hoping to get some feedback, um, on whether Imagine Learning or Lexia English is our way forward. Both of those programs, why is there an add-on for MLLs? Both of those programs address the speaking domain, which the other Lexia programs do not address. So that's that in a nutshell. Lots I could say about MLL education. The one thing that I will say, I, I don't hide the ball, I will tell you guys what I stand for, deeply invested into dual-language education. Um, I, I do think that that is a way forward for us. I do think that, um, I'm sure you hear all the time that it's the best way to educate multilingual learners. It's an investment, it certainly costs money. But I firmly believe in bilingualism for everyone, our multilingual learners and our English-speaking students. I just think that in a global society, bilingualism is our way forward. If you ask me the one thing I'm most embarrassed about myself, it's that I'm not bilingual. I wish, I really, really wish if my education had failed me in any way, I wish that somebody had said to me, invest in learning another language, Lisa, um, because our community here in Fall River is certainly multilingual, and the world is certainly multilingual. So you will hear from me in the future about dual-language education, because for sure, I think it's a way forward. I also think it's something you can capitalize on at the high school level, you know, with that seal of bi-literacy. I think that we're only gonna expand in those areas, and if something is worth doing, it is worth doing well, and I'm gonna go after it. So I, I really wanna see those stamps of bi-literacy on more kids' diplomas, and I, I just really wanna see, I really want Fall River to be the premier district in Massachusetts for educating our multilingual learners and for promoting bilingualism. That's just who we need to be.
Any questions, Mr. Agia?
On the slide, we see the progress towards efficiency. So this begs the question of non-high school at basically twenty-six percent less when they get to high school. I'm guessing that there's probably, uh, another picture to this of how this is possible, or is it, are we talking about the same kids that lose twenty-six percent? Or are we talking about some new kids that show up at ninth grade for the first time and not, don't, so? I'm not looking for an answer, but this slide, to me, takes a, like, some other explanation, because there's probably more to the story than just.
Absolutely, and just a quick, yes, it's both. So some of it are kids that are coming to us new in high school and just have less time to acquire English, is what it is. You come in tenth grade, there is no six years, right? That's not, but it's also, um, we do have many experienced multilingual learners who, if we are not catching them, back to that ELSP process, if we are not catching them, and we see a kid in fifth grade who's not transitioning out of our ESL services, why? Because that, chances are, that same kid is sitting in front of us at high school, still not transitioning out of our ESL services. So we really need to dig into that as a district and figure out who's slipping through the cracks.
And there's plenty of assessments to note. We shouldn't be surprised after year six.
We should not, but one of the challenges, right, is, is this a language acquisition issue, or is it something else? So there's a lot of push and pull. We don't wanna over-identify our multilingual learners as having a disability, and our multilingual learners might have a, have a disability, right? So there is a lot of really deep diving into what's happening with a kid, how their language is progressing. And one thing that we don't have is we don't have native language assessments. So we can't necessarily, we don't screen a kid in Spanish when they come through the door. So ESL education is really different. If I have literacy in my native language, that's a whole different trajectory than if I have no literacy skills. Sure, I speak Spanish, I speak Portuguese, but I, I don't deal with the written word. So there's, um, lots of areas to grow there to get an even fuller picture of who the kid sitting in front of us is.
Seems like you're on the track with, like, a lot of the things that I'm hearing, as far as my own two senses went. So I would support all the things, I'm curious about the dual language, and looking at, um, not for a discussion here, but maybe to email or something related to the old way we did, you know, before it was even called MLL, back twenty years ago when I first started in this, and what that looks like now. Because I think we went from, similar to what you're saying now, we went backwards, in my opinion. But I'm curious to see where you think we should go forward, because we, whatever that was, quick turnaround, everybody's gonna learn English in a year or two or three, and then throw them to the wolves, the way I think of it. So I think you're trying to, via the dual language, when in reality, we probably should just admit that that didn't work, and we should do something else, but I'm totally open to, uh, what you suggested.
So that's just not a feeling that you had. Massachusetts was one of two states that fully went English-only, and really, it set us back as a state. So other, other states, forty-eight other states, did not go in that direction. Massachusetts did. And so you will still see, if, if people were in the classroom during a certain time period when Massachusetts was English-only, you might actually see, see them say to a kid, no, no, don't speak in Spanish, don't, and we're moving away from that. Um, but Massachusetts wouldn't even allow for dual-language education programs for, for a window. So now we're seeing the pendulum swing back in the other direction. Um, and so there's a lot of work to be done.
Makes sense. Thank you, Arielle.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Curly?
Um, we're gonna do a little bit of special education.
Sure. Um, just quickly, with special education, we have twenty-nine teacher vacancies right now, ten of which are filled by paraprofessionals. On top of that, our class size in our inclusion setting is very large. I was in a kindergarten classroom a couple of weeks ago at Henry Lord, and I think they had twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids. That was a, uh, inclusion classroom with a special education teacher that is shared between K and Y. So knowing the challenges that we have with not only recruiting and maintaining the teachers and the class size, um, concerns. My goal for this year, which it continues to be, is to provide, um, buildings with support from special education experts that we have in the district, meaning our cluster coordinators, our supervisors, are not only working in the classrooms, especially our substantially separate classrooms or our specialized programs, with the instructional strategies, understanding how to internalize content, um, meeting the needs, the, the great needs of all of our students, but also, um, sitting in on ILT teams in buildings, being members of the data teams in, in buildings, which has been a shift. They were not as entrenched in the buildings as they wanted to be, and so now we've made that, um, a clear goal for us, because we have to get our staff and our students some more support. Really, that is the, the big idea for me when it comes to instruction and MCAS and kind of accountability data. You know, we have the resources with the curriculum, we have the digital platforms that give them the multiple, um, opportunities to access and practice skills. We have the collaboration with Office of Instruction and Special Education, and now our time is just get into the buildings and provide that level of support.
I was trying to make a small comment. I was out yesterday, and somebody approached me, somebody from Somerset, an attorney or something from Somerset, and she had asked if, who I was, and if I was the Shelley on the school committee. I said, yeah, and she said that she was in an IEP meeting, um, at Fonsoka School, and she said it was, she said she does a lot of this work, what, she does different work as an attorney, I guess. And she said that it was one of the best teams she's ever worked with, and that she said, um, everybody, she said it was one of the best, I, she raved. So I just wanted to let you know that.
That, thank you for sharing that.
Give them some high fives over there at Fonsoka.
And I will tell you that, um, our team chairs are participating.
Was the tone of my voice, I did that.
Our team chairs are participating in that, um, year-long PD with the Setlee Group, and, um, they are really embracing how to run, facilitate meetings more effectively, embracing IEP development. So thank you for sharing that.
It made me super happy to hear. I was very, and I was around other people, and I was like, oh, I'm sorry, this is Fall River, what is your? So it was good, I wanted to share it with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. Good questions? You mentioned you have twenty-nine vacancies in special education. Can we get a, how many, like, you mentioned first grade at some school. How many vacancies are in first grade, or second grade?
I have it by building, yeah, I have it by building, but I don't do it by.
I don't mean by, in special ed.
Oh, oh, oh.
So my hunch tells me that we're, we're not having as much trouble filling in a grade-one teacher or grade-two teacher.
Oh, you're right.
With that being said, there is still value in a second teacher in the room, even with the special educator doing the IEP piece, but having a second, like, those numbers are crazy.
Yeah.
You know, when you add up all the things that Mrs. Ponce mentioned before, I think there's value, and if we can't, like, we can keep throwing it out there, we need to hire more special ed teachers, but why don't we hire ten more first and second-grade teachers, so that we can provide some relief that that's a second person in the room, special educated, that's the other piece. So I think there's more value in just looking at those things, and obviously, if we have the money, we should do it.
Thank you. Dr. Curly?
So there are other indicators, um, in terms of advanced course work completion, um, and some of the other high school indicators, but I wanted to give, um, Dr. Bronhardsen, she's here, an opportunity to talk about the efforts around chronic absenteeism.
So upon assuming my role this year, you know, we've started even in the summer with our show-up campaign at the Back-to-School Bash. You know, as Superintendent Ponce mentioned, you know, when thirty-seven percent of our kids are chronically absent, I think it's really important to recognize that means over the course of a school year, kids are missing eighteen or more days. And I would love it if we were only talking about eighteen or nineteen days, but that's really not the picture, right? Kids are missing upwards of months of school, and I don't know how anybody can be successful at anything if you're missing that much time over the course of a ten-month span, right? So being able to get after school attendance, really thinking about our district priority around kids feeling connected to school and kids having meaningful relationships in school, and also, I would argue, that also plays into our relationships with our parents. Because when our parents feel respected and heard, and that the school is a safe place for their kids, we begin to mitigate some of those other factors as it relates to parents not supporting school attendance on the regular approach, right? So it, for, for us as a school district, it's, it's all-encompassing between students and families. And so as part of that work, you know, we also invest in attendance officers, and attendance officers have really, over the last several years, have been left to building principles to navigate and, and put systems in place for those, for that team. I believe that that's an under, I believe that was an underutilized team, so I've taken the lead, you know, with attendance living in my court. I've been working very directly with the attendance officers and with our student information system, so that way, the data is live and at our fingertips. Uh, we are reporting out, and we, we have developed some really strong systems across the district, based on what has it, what has been successful in my own experience as a building leader and during my time at Lord. And really, it was creating attendance monitors, so that we have individuals in every building that have caseloads of students that they are. so that we have individuals in every building that have caseloads of students that they are monitoring. They are celebrating success when kids are coming to school. They're showing up and giving high fives and, and also supporting with those difficult conversations as it relates to why are children not coming to school for those children who are not coming to school? How do we put supports in place at homes if that's what families need? And how do we personalize the experience for those families that need the extra supports? Because as we all know, the needs across our community ebb and flow over the course of a year. And what some families might need in September and October will be very different. Come January, it'll be very different come the end of the year. Um, so really, getting to know our students, not necessarily being in the place we used to be where one or two people oversees over two hundred students, that is not personalization around attendance. So this year, we have really been working heavily with our vice principals, um, building out a vice principal professional learning community where student attendance is central to that work. Um, working with our attendance officers in partnership with our schools. And then having every school develop an attendance monitor plan. Um, at Durfee, there are upwards of, I think the report today was about forty attendance monitors up at the high school, four-zero attendance monitors up at the high school. So they are really digging deep. They've got manageable caseloads. Um, the adults are beginning to learn the students and learn the stories so that we can really mitigate and intervene in proactive ways. Um, and we are already seeing that trend yield some pretty strong outcomes over the month of September and October. The last couple of weeks, we've been able to notice upwards of twelve of our schools for the last two weeks have all been above ninety-four percent attendance. Um, so we are seeing the traction. We are noticing a dramatic drop in our chronic absenteeism rate already. Uh, we are approaching, we are right now at day thirty-five. Friday will be day forty. So as of Friday, any student who had four absences or less, they will, four absences or less, they will not be considered chronic anymore. So we're really honing in at the student level as it relates to tracking the data. Um, and we are noticing big increases. Because to the superintendent's point, if our kids aren't here, nothing that any of the team that just spoke ahead of me is gonna have any traction. Um, so we're really working hard around those pieces. Um, and so that is where we are at right now with chronic absenteeism and really getting after it. Putting systems in place at every building, and we are reporting out every single Thursday in our, uh, weekly email that comes out from our team to all principals. We're also including, I've been also including all of the support staff. So vice principals, guidance counselors, and adjustment counselors are also receiving the information so that it is widespread across the district and everybody is getting updated. Um, and then meeting with individual teams to make sure that every, that all the teams in the district understand how our student information system of Aspen can help them in doing the work. Because we don't want folks spinning their wheels just because they don't understand how the platform and the reports that are available to them can give them the information that they need. So really making sure that folks have toolboxes with the appropriate tools and reports to be able to really do the work and not have it take up the majority of their day or overwhelming anybody's workload for the day. Um, and so far, we've gotten some really great feedback as we've continued to navigate the shift, um, to be more inclusive and having more hands involved in the work and not just relying on the subset of a few in buildings.
A question. The chronic absent rate, do the kids in, get grades in the elementary school? Or is it standard-based for all kinds?
Standard-based.
As we look at it, because we're talking about the chronic absenteeism and then therefore the MCAS is lower, I would, then therefore, if we did a correlation of it, you should have those children not meeting the standards on the report card. So I'd be curious to see what that looks like. Because sometimes what happens is kids miss all the time, but, you know, she's very nice, she does this and that, oh, yeah, she's getting there. And then we kind of give cushion grades rather than to say, no. The reality is, there's no way you missed thirty-eight days. You shouldn't be able to be proficient in this, you know. So when we get that, it'll help families to understand, whoa, whoa, whoa. Like, if it was a grading system and the kid got a sixty-five average, you'd, you'd be concerned. Whereas if she missed thirty days and she can still get an eighty-two, huh, no big deal, she's got an eighty-two. So I'm just curious of what correlation might look like and if there's changes that need to happen with that to, to help the work that you're doing. So with that, I go, thank you.
I'm curious, when we're monitoring, um, student absences, is there a way, like, how are we, um, tracking the reason for the absences? And then being able to, like, go back to that. So say the reason John is absent a lot is because he's dealing.
Babysitter's brother.
Whatever, he had to babysit his brother, or whatever the case may be. His mother's car broke and she doesn't let him take the, I don't know. Whatever the reasons are, maybe they're just having school refusal or what have you. But how are we, is there a way that we're doing that?
So they're making phone calls and direct contacts home with families, leveraging all of our communication tools, right? Parents' Square, direct phone calls, email.
Yeah.
Um, all of our attendance monitors are, are logging through the Student Journal, which is our main hub of all things student information as it relates to all of our outreach communication and just essentially contact with outside providers, whether that's families and/or if we have releases to connect it to students, right? The Journal is a hub that all school staff know to go to as it relates to all things about a student. Um, so we're leveraging the Journal to be the main hub of where these things get documented. In addition to that, in the student's attendance fieldset, if you would, there's also a place for comments. So logging the reason in the comments will also have it live in a couple of different places so that we can see patterns over time to be able to then work with families as it relates to the patterns of attendance, right? I think it's really important to note that we're not saying that kids can't be absent from school. Everybody's human, right? Like, absences happen. But when we start talking about chronic absenteeism and we start looking at ten percent of a school day, and when we see kids on a pattern of attendance that causes us concern, that would, that they would be on a track to reach eighteen by the end of a year, um, we're looking to intervene with a multitude of different ways. And really, you know, to Mr. Agia's point, educating our families about the why, the why is about the academic achievement. Without, you know, at, at a minimum, our kids need to graduate from high school. In, in this day and age, baseline, high school diploma is our non-negotiable. We can always talk about where you're headed life after high school, but every student in the four of a public schools must and needs to earn a high school diploma in order to have opportunities and options in their future. So, so that is the goal, that is the message. It is not about antagonizing families. It's not about, you know, getting into it with families. But really, it's about understanding, for families to understand, the academic connection. Um, and also what we've seen firsthand, when kids come to school, school gets a little easier, right? And, and all of a sudden, I can access school with more confidence and everything else.
And then you wanna come more.
Then you wanna come. Who wants to show up to a place every day where I am not successful?
Somebody's gonna ask your question.
Correct. You know, and, and we're working with our schools. Um, again, you know, we've invested heavily in our SEL support. So we are on top of it across all of our schools with systems and structures as it relates to building a climate and a culture in our schools that is warm and nurturing and caring and a place that kids wanna be. Um, and really working with our building leaders to create that climate and culture. And it stems from all of our connected relationships in a school building and being able to meet the needs of our kids.
So a principal can log onto this system and know if Sally's been out or whatever. He can log on and read the notes that the monitors, whoever, and make a connection, oh, Sally's been out because this is the issue that's going on at home or with her or whatever. And can then navigate and have those, like, nice conversations.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Bronhardsen.
We hope that helps.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Can we just, the next, I'm looking at the agenda. It looks like the only thing to refer is the Katie Brown.
Yeah.
Two hours in, so if we can just do that and then maybe to get the last two. I read the, the update.
Right, I think that.
I wanna get to the refer before we end up.
Okay, so motion to refer this, right, first?
Yeah, no, no, the first one, motion to refer.
Yeah, motion to refer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With revisions, right?
Oh, with revisions.
Yeah, whatever you present, yes.
Yes.
So we are going to move to three, zero-two, update and discussion to refer Katie Brown. Who am I referring to?
Um, so, yeah, so the Katie Brown contract, um, is the last contract that we'll be bringing forward. Um, looking to present it, to move it forward. Historical, um, historically, the contract has been a hundred and ten thousand. I've shared with you, um, the grade-level objectives to note that Katie Brown has been coming into the four of a public schools for many a years. I'm not even quite, do you know?
Going back to, like, twenty-twelve, at least.
At least, right? Um, with Dan coming on, um, later in the game and more recently, you know, we haven't had too much of an opportunity yet to connect around the program's effectiveness. So as noted at even the last school committee meeting, or, you know, when we were looking at the People Inc. contract, my goal would be for us to really get an analysis this year of what, how do our educators feel this program is meeting the needs of our kids? Um, in a time right now where violence feels, at least after the last week that we've had here in the four of a public schools, it's been a challenging week. Um, and I, I wouldn't, I would not recommend not moving forward with this work. Um, but as we move forward, really taking a key look to see, um, if this is the right program for us and/or if not, where else will our kids get access to this information? Um, I know the new health, uh, standards are rolling out, and so I'm curious to see whether or not there's a place for us to adopt some of this work within our own curriculum with our students.
I think there might be.
Right? Um, however, for this school year, I do feel that our historical work with Katie Brown does have a place in our schools. And so we're recommending, um, that we move forward this year with an opportunity to assess the outcomes and then make a recommendation. Moving forward.
Be recommended to be at the same level as last year.
Correct.
Make a motion to move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, to refer.
To refer, yeah, to the full committee. Yes, at the same level as last year, yes, no, no increase funding.
So we will refer.
Perfect.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Even though I'm literally waiting outside. I can just include in the Friday email.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's fine. Because they were just updates.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.